Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Members of the board, chancellor, we're delighted to have the opportunity to briefly share with you our application for associate applied science and certificate in medical radiology technology. I have with me this morning Dr. Bruce Crawford, who is our instructional vice president at the college, and associate dean, Dr. Sheila Marable, who is responsible for our health care programs, and they'll give you a brief overview of our application here. Thank you.
Good morning. It's my honor and privilege to stand before you today to introduce the person who's going to really talk to you about the program. However, let me just tell you a little bit about how we came about this program. The University of Alabama Birmingham Health System and Medical System, uh, medical, uh, Medicine Building asked us to look at some new allied health programs that would help them to fill the gap that they have and the need that they have in the workforce in certain areas. A couple of years ago, we came to the university and did this diagnostic medical sonography program, which is up and running now. And so they came back to us from the Department of Radiology there and the Department of Cardiography to ask us to look into providing a medical radiologic program so that we can get more people into the workforce because there would be a shortage. And because of the aging population, we have more needs for more imaging and different types of programs that would help to serve the medical society. So we're going to talk to you briefly about how we established the need and then verifying the student interest as well as how we are securing the support for this program. So Dr. Sheila Marable, who's associate dean for allied health, who's an outstanding person in our program and outstanding allied health program, so Dr. Marable will come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Marable. As Dr. Crawford was saying, we met with the University of Alabama Medical Center back in June, Dr. Ward and Dr. Crawford and I, along with the staff, the chair of the radiology program at the University of Alabama. What I want to share this morning is that we have presented to you all a list of the program objectives as well as the student learning outcomes for the radiology program. But briefly, what we want to do is to begin to provide a curriculum sequential coursework that will gradually and consistently build student knowledge in radiography and coordinate didactic teaching with clinical experience. And as I said, the University of Alabama has provided that there would be a clinical setting for this program as we work through it. Another goal that we have is that we want to be able to prepare students with skills and attitudes and knowledge to be able to sit for the registration exam for radio, uh, radiologic technology and to also seek employment within the profession. And a third goal that we have is that we want to be able to respond to the rapid growth of medical imaging and the immediate shortage of the registered medical imaging professionals. After we had our meeting with the UAB staff, we went before the academic standards committee at the college to seek approval before moving forward. And so we were able to get approval then to move forward from our academic standards committee. We also looked at what would be the need based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and we found that this position is expected to increase by several percent through 2024 for the state of Alabama. The average salary for these individuals range anywhere from about forty-seven thousand to sixty-one thousand dollars. So it is a high wage, high demand program that we are looking to invest in. Our long-term projections for employment within the state of Alabama is an increase of about three hundred and thirty new positions over the next six years. Also because of the baby boomers within the state of Alabama and about, we will see an increase in medical conditions that will cause them to rely upon medical diagnostic imaging and radiologic services. So there are a number of employees within its surrounding areas that would be able to employ these individuals. You have hospitals such as UAB Health System, the University of Alabama Birmingham Hospitals, Hospital Hospitals, Brookwood Medical Imaging Systems, MRI and Imagines of Alabama, Holik Clinics, and many other medical providers that these individuals would be able to be employed in. We are hoping that we will be able to implement this program fall of 2020. We understand that there are at least ten radiological programs within Alabama, with Jefferson State being the closest, and then the next closest being Wallace State, which is about fifty miles away. But because the University of Alabama approached us about adding an additional program within the area, we think that we would be able to sustain that program as where as graduates of that program. Currently in Lawson State, our pre-nursing program is one of our largest. We have about roughly eight hundred students that are considered to be pre-nursing. Annually, we might admit about a hundred and fifty within to all of our allied health programs. And as Dr. Crawford mentioned, a couple of years ago, one of the most recent programs in high demand, high-waage program that we implemented was the diagnostic medical sonography. And we'll have our first cohorts to graduate in May of this year. Therefore, that leaves about six hundred and fifty students that are desiring to work within the healthcare field. And so with the number of programs that we currently have at Lawson, we think that this would be an additional program to steer those individuals who are in the pre-nursing program, who may not be admitted as early as they would possibly like to be admitted. So there is another career option then for those individuals. In verifying our students' interest, we did a survey. We had about a hundred and seventy-plus students to respond, and of those students, more than ninety-two percent of them either said that they would consider, strongly consider, may consider, or they knew someone who would be interested in a radiologic program. So we feel that the interest is there to implement this program. With UAB as our partner, they have pledged to provide us with instructional equipment that would be of help to us, maybe possibly even help with adjunct faculty for the program. And we find that based on the start of the program and sustaining the program that we would be able to do that with tuition, Perkins, WIOA, and the partnership with the UAB staff. They are going to also serve as an advisory committee for us to assist us with implementation of the program. And so we have had, as I said, not only the chairperson for the radiology program, but we also have the individual who have worked with us with the DNS program that will support clinical sites and what have you.
Just one additional question. Dr. Sherry Cannon, who is over the radiology program at UAB, stressed to us how desperate they were to have technicians to be in this program. And they were looking and thinking only about UAB. If you come to the metropolitan Birmingham area, there are about fourteen to sixteen hospitals and facilities there that utilize radiology technicians. Even with Lawson State doing this program, with Jefferson State being in place and providing services already, Dr. Cannon has acknowledged that even with the two colleges producing students, it's not likely to be enough for UAB alone or not considering the other, uh, the other consultants. So we think this career pathway has a lot of potential for our students and the population in the metro Birmingham area, and would like to present the proposal for your consideration.
Question. Appreciate the detailed information. It sounds like we're definitely not able to fill a need of people in this area. I appreciate the letters of support salary information.
All right, thank you all.
This is Wallace State Open, and Wallace State requests approval of its naming and proposed indoor athletic facility after Coach Johnny Popper. The college students have been recently approached by the university, and have made significant commitments towards the construction of a indoor athletic facility, which would be used by the baseball and softball facilities, if they want the facility to make. The college believes that using Coach Popper's name in connection with fundraising for this program will have significant benefits. This is request by authority for the Alabama Community College System to purchase for the ten fifty views of this estate. The property located in two seventy-two Wall Street is located directly in Paul's from the college's main campus. The property is comprised approximately one point four eight acres and includes a building with just over eleven thousand square feet. That building formerly served as the food set office for mobiles. It's been purchased by the Mobile Health Department. The cost of the property, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less the cost of accessories removed, and the Mobile Health Department has agreed to split with the college closing costs, appraisal, and structural engineering evaluations, and other required assessments for the building. The building has been appraised at four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The college intends of using the building for free future allied health purposes. And this property is adjacent to the game. Does anyone have a question?
I just might suggest that, given you impress the size, things it's found, we would like to use that data. I understand that facilities that we approved funding for, and I know that if you see a presentation, you may play basically an interest in the campus. I think the department is going to be there. It's part of that initiative, and I would prepare for it as much as I can.
President, I have a couple of suggestions.
Good morning. Just to give you updates as far as the health science building, which is right now a library that will be renovated, it came in, it came in a little, but so we've been working with the contractors and worked it out as far as the plans, allowing the north special regulations, which you also allow us to go further with that. The advance made by the center, it should be newspaper today. I'm starting to begin from there. So that's where we are with that. As far as the, the building that, thank you, this year, with, the building was purchased by the, by the Mobile County Health Department. And they were only interested in the parking area, and so they approached me and asked me if I would be interested in the building. And we're looking at potentially three traditional health related programs at the University of South Alabama Hospital, that's what we're looking at. So that's probably interested in that. It sits right across the street from the property that was purchased several months ago. So that's where we stand with the facilities that we have. Then any questions?
Does we need that department?
Yes, the, the property that we purchased, purchased several months ago, we would use that market.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Chancellor Baker, and members of the board. We have before you an item that resulted from a careful analysis of the expenditures that we incur for an article referred to, the Gudston State, and that is our residence hall. This residence hall has been in service since the nineteen seventies when we wanted to provide room and board for our international students. We were the first college in the state to have an international program, but over time, needless to say, we have incurred a lot of deferred maintenance in that facility, and as you can see from the action item that we've placed before you, we have also in the last four to five years placed a lot of money into renovating a facility and making it a better space for our students. We are asking for a fairly significant increase in the room and board rates, and that is because we've paid increased money for our food services and had to incur quite a bit of expenditure in other budgets to maintain the operation of that facility. So we are asking for a rate increase in fall and spring from eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred, and then our summer, which has a low occupancy rate. It's, it is less, but it is from eleven twenty-five to fifteen hundred. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
I appreciate the background information, and I do understand the need, and I do have the opportunity to speak to that with Alabama. Appreciate you standing up and explaining to me, so I do have a concern about such a significant increase on our students. But I would, going forward, if we could, if we could look on an annual basis, so that we do not have to see that stuff happening, or something huge, a big increase, we'd be challenged.
I think that is a good suggestion, and my CFO, Kevin McFries, here with me, and he and I have already talked about putting that in place so that we have a little bit more due diligence, because the building is old. Since I've been in this action item, we've had a serious problem that we have had to take emergency action on, and I expect that to happen in this facility.
I want to say I know everyone is sensitive to our students. I'm not discounting that at all. I truly understand the need.
I think, in relation to that, I think it would be, I know there were circumstances that the colleges provide, and I appreciate those, and I think this would also be something that other institutions need to know of, and try and assess on a very, I mean, annual basis, and time recovery expenses on things that are unattractive like the current situation. Not only is it a hardship, and a hardship on some students, not all for different reasons, but also you have lost that revenue over the period of time that you're not collecting. I have found that to be true, and our revenue department did not keep on regular frases and properties, and property numbers like that. It can go five or six years, and we haven't kept up with the babies. The government has missed that opportunity to collect it. As long as everybody's security, anyway, get to the fact that that's just also a concern to, to others. Anything else from the board on this?
Dr. Lex, this projection that you have here really is just breaking even.
It's breaking even, yes. Thank you very much.
Good morning. So the following action item is for your consideration of authorization of industry certification initiative funds to support workforce grants and workforce initiative for the following items that are listed here. So the first three are for NSSC Certified Production Technician Assessments and Certifications. As you know, we've had a large OEM manufacturer in North Alabama that is prioritizing certified production technician, people that have earned that certification, to go to work with them. So this is driving a large population of people that are going to our adult ed program to achieve this certification, so they want to have that leg up. And so it's a tremendous opportunity for our adult ed education program to serve them and to be able to provide additional services in addition to a career pathway to become a TAV career and to optimize Toyota or one other supplier, or any manufacturer in North Alabama that gives them a certain benefit. So that, that is what those funds afford, both county and community colleges, direct to the state. We will have a combined effort to service those populations that are looking for that certification, and so that's, that's why we have spoken with funds to go to both of those colleges to support that. In addition, Northeast Alabama Community College, that's a population of students that is also pursuing certification, and those funds will also be able to support those students to provide those three money to help with this, taking the assessment support that will really help that student. The following, the additional action items, I'm going to ask you to cover those.
Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker, bring attention to you at the item number four. This is for Coastal Community College, Aviation College. It's really to upgrade our equipment that has been needed for years, and also adding new certifications that's very interested in Airbus and several other companies in the area down near the MCAN program. So I think it's a very, really, we need this very bad in that particular location there as well. The other items, I'll talk about five axis in the presentation, a presentation, short presentation to talk about this. This is to equip our, five of our colleges with new technologies to help out aerospace and advanced manufacturing technologies and all of those industries. So we were recently, really, talked about, and they, they came to us from the Pentagon, the Department of Defense is working with several universities across the south and the north. They're working directly with Auburn University and Dr. Greg Harris. So Dr. Greg Harris reached out to us and said we wanted to get along with them on this particular project. So we immediately accepted the challenge, and so this is a program to really focus on high-tech careers and two-year colleges across the United States, and is driven by the Pentagon and the Department of Defense. Adele Reckl, this person is rocking this, and so she reached out to Greg Harris, who used to be one of her employees at Auburn. And so the next page, really, real quickly, is we actually helped prototype this program, turned it into a competition. And so we worked with the states of Mississippi, the states of Louisiana to turn this into a program. And it was, just a little bit more about that, is that we had a recent competition in Auburn. The city of Auburn handed up a lot of money for one of the buildings, they retrofitted it, they got a five-axis piece of equipment there because we didn't have one to donate to this particular cause. Some of the things that the Department of Defense says is that we're really behind on this type of skill set for our employees in the future, two point five million jobs, not in this particular category, but in high-tech Department of Defense types of jobs that are needed, and the average pay for these jobs around seventy thousand dollars per year. So we took it as a good challenge, we created some teams, we really, a lot of people at this office worked very hard on that. This is a list of some of the companies within Alabama that will reap the benefits of our future graduates in five axes. Certainly not all, it's mainly airspace, aviation, and high-tech advanced manufacturing for engine plants around the state. And so there's going to be about twelve hundred and fifteen openings based on our embassy study there. Our recent competition in January, just recently, we had four teams, Northeast Community College, Community College, Calvin Community College, Southern Union Community College, Advanced and State Community College. Each of these teams are made up of industry, but one of the professors are instructors and students, and according to Adele Reckl of the Department of Defense, she said we're blowing away the other states of the nation. And so we want to maintain that by getting some equipment so we can have our professors continue to do that. So some of our next steps is for your proposals to look at our request for five-axis equipment. Certainly want to make sure that you're aware, the next competition will be in May or June of this year, and then the winners of that will go to the national championship. I have, I'm very optimistic that one of our teams, or maybe two of our teams, will go to the national competition in Chicago soon. And last but not least, is a picture of our participants in this. And I would like to introduce the next person, who is the representative school that won this competition, and this is Dr. Mike Kenner.
Good morning. I'm Mike Kenner, and I have the great privilege of serving as dean of Workforce Development at Northeast Alabama Community College. On behalf of our president, Dr. David Campbell, who couldn't be here today, I want to thank Chancellor Baker, the ACCS staff, and board trustees for bringing project manufacturing to Alabama. You know, we believe that competition can be good and beneficial to our students. It challenges them to practice, to hone their skills, and be the best that they can be. But our instructors were specifically intrigued by this particular competition because it provides a level of realism that's unmatched by any other we've participated in before. And this realism was manifested in a couple of ways, and let me share those with you. First of all, a competition brought together students from drafting, machining, and welding programs to design and fabricate and assembly comprised of various individual parts. This was an opportunity for these programs that normally work very well separately to work even better together to see the benefit of collaboration. Secondly, this was very realistic in that the students were expected to produce parts and assemble them into a finished product. and assemble them into a finished product. They had to be built to precise measurements, assembled for specifications, and meet strict quality standards. One of the greatest things about this competition is it also assigns an economic value to the work that the students do. Time equals money, and students learn to budget their time on the project in order to reduce costs. This business mindset will help them to be better employees now and to be better businesspeople that they progress in their career. We're really grateful that the system office has recommending to the board to grant us the money to purchase a hottest UMC five hundred five-axis machine. You might ask, why do you need advanced manufacturing machines like this in your tiny little corner in the foothills of the Appalachian Mountains in Northeast Alabama? Well, I'm glad you asked. This machine will help the college, it'll help our students, and it'll help the community. Let's start with our students because that's where every idea we have should be born in helping our students. Our students are well-educated, they're well-trained, they hold relevant industry certifications, and by the time they graduate, they gain experience and they're filled with study. Around Northeast, we like to say that the more keys you have on your keyring, the more doors you're able to open. And being proficient in five-axis machining is a great key to have on your keyring. It will open doors for opportunity to our students, and we're all about opportunity in Northeast. This acquisition will also help the college because it will help us to attract the brightest and best students in their program. And finally, having this machine will help our community. For a community our size, we have an inordinate number of metal making companies in our area. These companies are looking to employ every efficiency possible to improve the quality and enhance their production capability. Currently, in the two counties that we primarily serve, there are no industries that use five-axis machining. And there's a very good practical reason that they don't because we don't have any five-axis machinists trained. By adding this machine, it means that the community has an added resource that will help our old corner of Northeast Alabama become more competitive and bring new projects and potentially even new companies to our area. So in closing, I want to thank you for your leadership, your vision, and your trust in Northeast to wisely utilize the resources that you provided to our community and our state. We commit to you that any resources you send to Northeast, we're going to use it to the fullest extent.
Mike, can there be any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to comment that this was one of the best presentations for these initiatives that I've seen so far, and I appreciate that so much. It's often difficult to see the full picture of how these funds affect colleges, programs, and students, and how are they going to make our students a more attractive employee. And I think you guys are accomplished that day.
I'm sorry, you, you did a lot of good. And I've been gathering more information, getting more statements. Thank you for saying that. Thank you, please.
Chairman Thompson, members of the board, I have three facility action items that I've talked about today. First one, we've seen the board, that is the Calvin Community College Sparkling Building and load renovation. We've been talking about this for better part of the year. We came to the board last spring, we got approval for page one, the object, reject construction cost, two million, reject total cost, four million. And at the time, we told the board that we were looking at a total project, all phase was around seventeen million dollars. We had into design this project, the architect advised us to, one, if we based one, to get to all three of us, so it really wasn't possible to separate the procedures. Second thing, it had preparation of building, it sold us, advised us to be in fire scope and for the extensive foundation preparation. So we made the decision to modify the scope, modify the logistics, and then bring back the power to the board for reconsideration. I do appreciate members of the board who have technical buildings, so I can only leave the super building, the lead, just there as well. To remind the board, the scope, we're not really touching the interior of the building, this is favorite vision, the exterior walls, roof, the envelope. Building has been built out of years, a lot of nice, very nice programs to set that building up. Now we got to do something with the interior, I'm sorry, the exterior. Remind everybody where this is, we're talking about the Huntsville location, the college. Building question is highlighted there, yellow, it's the one, first square portion. This is very good question, this is. When we look to revise scope, we're currently getting a building, I've got four for several conversations about the corporate scope. What we actually want to perform, you said the total cost that we're proposing is twenty-one million dollars. We also had expensive compensation, that's the best way to beg this project. Jason Wood, to remember the presentation, to Jason Wood and Calvin to discuss the funding rate for this project.
Chairman Thompson, Chancellor Baker, board members, thank you for the opportunity to present this project. I wanted to go to the next slide. I just wanted to present, yeah, I just wanted to show you our existing debt that's outstanding now for the college, which is made up of two different bonds. There's a two thousand twelve bond issued and a two thousand fourteen bond. The total, we now owe twenty-seven million on those bonds. Originally, those together were almost forty million, and we'll see later where we stand on those slides, on those bonds. But we're proposing to supplement our unexpendable plant funds for this project with a ten million dollar bond issue. We think the combination of a ten million dollar bond and the funds we have on hand will allow us to comfortably pay for this project and still keep a safe amount of reserves for the college. This, I'm sorry, this is the illustration of our two existing bonds, just so that you can see where we stand. We'll see in two thousand twenty-five, the twelve bonds go away, we'll pay those off, and then in two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen bonds will be, will be paid off. So when we look at wrapping the additional ten million dollar debt issue that we're proposing today, I just wanted to show you how that would look when they're combined with our existing debt. Again, the far left is our actual debt structure right now. And then you see the proposed section, that would have the ten million dollar debt issue added to our, our existing debt. The proposed bond issue, we used a hypothetical three point zero five percent. That was provided to us by Stiefel, and they've been very instrumental in helping us with our projections and the wrapping of this debt. But as you can see, I wanted to show on the very far right column, the bottom line, the additional amount of payments we would be making on our debt if we added this ten million dollar bond. And you can see it's, it's fairly minimal, especially the first ten years. And of course, the total column shows you that after two thousand twenty-five, our debt goes from four point three, three point three, then drops to one point six, and never goes above that again. So it's a really very manageable for us, and interest rates are so low right now, we feel like it's, it makes sense to spread this cost out with this ten million dollar debt issue. And I welcome any questions from the board this time.
No questions. I'm just saying, I had an opportunity to do these earlier, and with respect to reserve at the end of this project, I think the policy reserve comes up somewhere to five or six, back to five or six. You're a good chap all the way through this, each year, this project, really good shape at the end when you're ready to relate.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? Next, two access items, one of these from New Rose State Community College. The first action item is that both of the four doors at New Rose State's main campus, over the past several years, we have renovated a number of buildings there at New Rose State, it's a building, such as building, fourish buildings like that, seven buildings surrounding the four doors of the address. It is now time to address the four doors itself. Again, the rise of the location. This shows the courtyard area and some buildings which were supposed to address, gives some idea of the four and half measures of what, what it looks like now and what we intend to look like once we get done. The attempt on this project, there's two permanent areas for students. We want to have a fire, attract students, entertain students. We think that pressing four doors is a cost-effective way to propose costs in this project, which include head estimate construction cost, six hundred thousand dollars, ten to thirty thousand. The total cost runs to just under six hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. We propose to pay for that entirely out of the Cross State College funds. Any questions on this?
Does I have a question?
Yes, this was a, you asked about the area, the four doors, just under a hundred seventy thousand, so it's a large area. Let's go from both parts, get them. The last facility item, it's also from the Cross State, but those are kids, the one in the building, the Aviation College, the order proposed, we gave renovation of that building, including both the air pole, electrical plumbing, also interiorization of some classrooms. As program seeks to end the delegation, we can harvest the above. I'm glad to see that we are addressing renovation and construction. If you recall, was it two years ago, President Rogers, we got a grant from the state specifically to work on the scanners. We've been doing everything except the scanners early years. We propose to pay for this primarily through grant funding. We balance divided by Cross State. We will, we will have a metarisk of the breakdown of the resources of the action item next month. We have specific ones to pay for this, and from the Cross State. Go back a couple slides, you'll see an idea of what the interior is really going to look like, how we got buildings when upgraded, since we built here days, what we're looking at, what we're about to date, classrooms, necessarily rest of the facility. Any questions on that?
Any questions from the board? As an update to the board, we, the policy and bylaws for me, we're going to start looking at some things regarding bylaws, any efficiencies that we might have in regard to Saks and clients, and also listen, take this, or the systems.
If I can start it.
First one, you put five side, or anybody.
Is there anything else that the board, seeing this was being determined.